At this time, I will call the regular township business meeting for the trustees of Franklin Township Order on October thirty first at twelve P. M. I would ask Byron, Chief Byron Smith, if he would open his report.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day of life. Lord, we ask that you put your blessed hand upon everybody here in our entire township. May we make decisions today that's right for the township and on our own agendas, Lord, maybe look to help others instead of ourselves. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ken, will you lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. When you're ready, will you please give us a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindsey?
Yes. Thank you. Seeing no, no old business on the agenda, I am going to move to new business to Patty. You're up.
I don't know what to do. I'm always, I'm, I'm. Happy Thursday, everybody. Boy, that we're meager today. Everybody out trick or treating?
I guess.
God, okay. Well, got some stuff. City always has some stuff. Under health and safety, there is a free, lead-free RRP certification training that is going to be available and it'll be, um, some of it already started in October, but there's a November nineteenth and two of them in December, one in January, one in February, and one in March. And they also have it in Spanish. And it's, um, I have a flyer for that. The Columbus Humane is conducting wellness exams for dogs and cats. It's called Walk-in Wellness Fridays, and it's on a first come, first served basis, and no appointment is needed. And I have a little thing on that.
What does that entail? Wellness? Do they do free shots or?
I, it really doesn't say exactly what they do exam, a wellness exam.
Okay.
Is what they, right.
Gotcha.
What that could mean.
I know.
Yeah.
I just wanted the public that watch from home to, okay, so what do I expect?
Um, there's also, one was yesterday. A lot of this is, some of this is in person, some of this is a Facebook Live, but it's a tobacco cessation community conversations that the Breathing Association has started a new series for education. They are free, interactive conversations, um, and you can join the Facebook Live each Wednesday from five thirty to seven. Under housing, winter weatherization, um, the Department of Aging, I have a link for people to be able to sign up, to, for seniors to get literized, to have their house looked at and stuff like that. Columbia Gas, I don't know how many of you have gas. I'm an all-electric house, so this does not apply to me. But if you have gas, um, they have a newsletter, a newsletter highlighting the updates. And I printed out the newsletter for y'all, um, that they're following people with gas. Under transportation and employment, Columbus City Schools is hiring. They are hiring instructional assistants. And Saturday, November second, um, from ten to two, they are going to have a job fair. Then also, uh, November thirteenth, from three to four, there is going to be at Marion Franklin Library, a beginning gene, genealogy course. So you can learn how to research your family history. It's Wednesday, November thirteenth, three to four P. M., uh, on Lockhorn Road. And something for our fire department, next, on, on our next meeting, November twelfth, we are going to have representatives to present to us for twenty-two eighty October Ridge Road, which is behind the Auto Zone. And they are wanting to do apartments. I believe it's a one point one acre site that they, that they're looking at.
That's shocking. Okay, please.
So. I will leave it.
Is this affordable housing? Is this affordable housing?
It does have parking spaces in front of the apartments. Does that?
I don't know.
Affordable housing is, I have no idea. My interpretation of affordable housing and a lot of other people is, I'm also saying. I'm, I'm, me, I'm under twelve hundred dollars a month would be affordable housing. You know, nine to eleven hundred. Nobody could build anything anymore, I guess, for that.
They're down, they're down in Corey, it's like five thousand a month.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, um, I, I gave you a, a site outline here of where it's going to be. And I printed off, um, what their plan is for you guys to look at. And, um, if anyone wants to come to our November twelfth meeting, um, to listen in, ask questions, you're more than welcome.
And this is over on Harrisburg Pike?
It's off, it's off the Harrisburg Pike.
Off the Harrisburg Pike behind the Auto Zone.
I think it's behind there.
That's City.
Murdo King right there, too.
Yeah.
That's City of Columbus.
Patty, can I ask, how many acres did you say?
I thought, if I remember my paperwork correctly, it was one point one acre.
One point one acre.
How many stories? I didn't get the chance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
They have, I don't know that, I didn't, I didn't print out the whole, whole thing to.
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna go ahead. I'll allow this time.
Well, I did, I want, have they been before they're coming November twelfth? November twelfth? Okay. I'll get what you have to me.
Yeah. I tried to get a staff report before, but this, I've just talked to the, just got my email this morning that they aren't planning on doing a staff report until November twenty-first. The problem is, we don't meet in December, and that would put them off until at least January, possibly February. I didn't feel, had this been any other month of the year, I could have held them another month to get that staff report. But I don't, I can't. I, I didn't feel right doing that.
And that's here at what time? Six?
I open the doors at six. We start our meeting at six thirty.
Anything else for us? Thank you. There again. Still working on your goal, which is work.
It gets bigger.
You'll have to rotate stuff out. All right, um, public comments.
Uh, yes. We have one. Cindy Klein, remember, you got three minutes. We won't interrupt, and then we may have discussion afterwards.
Sorry, I'm hit, sorry. Oh, I had reset.
Technological challenge.
Yeah, I don't know which one you.
I have a question. We've been dealing with the fiscal issues with Ms. Lindsay, and I know that in the reports, there are misappropriated funds, checks not accounted for, we've heard that they've been cashed, so on and so forth. I'm curious to know what the status is on these reports that, checks that we've had issues with, whether they've been hacked, whatever the case may be. I'm just very curious as to where we are with logistics on tracking actions on things like that.
It is a still undergoing, we talked about it with Chief Smith last week, or two weeks ago, it's still undergoing investigations.
No, no knowledge, can't, nothing found out?
They're still going under, under investigations.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it's like, I know that there's crazy things.
Yeah, keep checking back, though. As soon as we know something.
You know, I will.
Yeah, we'll let you know if we hear something, but all free to ask.
There, there is no, um, appropriations, misappropriations.
No, I know that there are missing checks, so on, so forth.
Not as much as missing checks as check frauds, checks that was copied.
Okay, yeah, and that's, it's like, okay.
And there's not missing checks.
Okay.
And from this point forward, what we have done is moved to ACH, so that we're not writing as much check.
Yeah. I did that for years with the lumber company, so, yeah.
I wanna check.
It's much less difficult.
Check with Byron, because my recollection was a little different. Do you remember what you said when James asked you that question, sir? About the investigation on the, I, I thought you led, I, my belief was that they were, it was done.
I think it's still considered open.
Right, okay.
Um, but they don't have any leads.
Right, oh, okay.
So it's not, it's not closed, but it's not really, there's no traction.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't say something that was, uh, correct. So you were right, sir, sorry. Not, not a problem. Always, you know, it's always good to question one another, because I might have heard it differently. Um, moving on to departments, I'm sorry, Sheriff's Department, do you have anything for us?
Um, yeah, I have an update about, um, case that we have that I shared before. So the sergeant that was working on the case was able to, um, went to the house, made a couple arrests. They found a house of meth and LSD. They encouraged the residents to please, if there's any drug activity, to contact us. So we can start, you know, the case and we can start investigation. Because this individual came here and made a report, we were able to arrest the people that were, um, in that house. We were able to stop the consuming of drugs and selling it to our kids, to the community. So it was a good thing.
Oh, now that's the house that was shot, shot up, shot up?
Correct. So, um, it was a gang that is very powerful here in Columbus. Um, they very, um, how can I say, aggressive, very violent. So I guess there was a drug activity that went wrong, selling or whatever, so they came to shut the people that was, um, shoot the people that was living there. But unfortunately, it hit the residents that came and made the report. Because of the way the house looks.
Yeah, and the, the residents that did come in, I felt for them. They're very nice people that came in and, uh, you know, they were seeking help wherever they could. So I commend you in your office for being able to swoop in and it worked out so quickly and so efficiently.
Now, they're safe, the kids are safe, um, the neighborhood is safe. We encourage everybody to always have a camera, so that helps us. But because the resident was very anal and getting, um, uh,
Detail.
You know, more details to us, like, there was a lot of license plates, there was a lot of details that was shared with us. So that helped us to, um, be able to find these people, because they had fled, um, the house once. Um, we were lucky for them. There was an arrest for their, there was a warrant from the FBI for their arrest. So we were able to clean that up in that area. So we encourage every single resident to always contact the sheriff's office, make the complaint, whether it's in English or Somali, it doesn't matter, Spanish. We have interpreters available to support them in any way that we can.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Getting another drug dealer off the streets is always good. Moving on to the department heads, um, fire department, I'm gonna have you go first, because you have an emergency.
Also, Chief, someone brought in a fire extinguisher that has been used. They didn't know what to do with it.
I, I don't have anything. The only thing I have is something is down under Steve's. I think so. Unless anybody has questions.
You wanna, Steve, you wanna do that now, or you wanna?
I, I do, um.
So the levee seems to be going well while he's looking for that. I know I've had calls of people asking questions as they're filling out their ballot, and I answered the best I could.
Doing a lot of work, doing a lot of work.
We had a, we had a very, I'll speak on, part of it is, we had a very successful door lock. Was that two Saturdays ago?
Yep.
We teamed up with Brian Garvine and Congressman Carey's group, and about thirty, thirty-five? People out, door locking.
That's good. They'll be out one more time this Saturday for sure, and then any addresses we don't get to Saturday, they're gonna go to Sunday.
I'll be out all day. Anything else to report to us? Well, I'll tell you what, while, while we're waiting on Mr. Mazur, um, since you're leaving, I usually, you usually tell everybody to get with the department heads after the meeting.
Yeah, I don't have to leave for an hour. You guys are moving along today. I'm just worried that the last few meetings.
Well, you probably, you won't be here at the end, probably, so I'll go ahead and, if anyone has a question for, for Bob right now, I'll open it up. All right, well, fine. I'm trying, Steve. You, you ready?
I'm, I'm good. I just had to get this. I just got some additional information on this resident.
I was trying to stall for you.
The caller's updating for me. Um, this is Resolution twenty twenty-four, yes, one eighty-three. It's a resolution approving a hundred twenty hours of FMLA, FMLA lead for Andrew T. Schmidt. Being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, the board approves a hundred twenty hours of FMLA lead for employee Andrew Schmidt in a period of ten sixteen twenty twenty-four through ten thirty twenty twenty-four for Article thirty-two of the employees' collective bargaining agreement attached, uh, exhibit that approves as FMLA from our third-party administrator. Be it further resolved in all formal accidents for concerning relating to the adoption of this resolution, passing through convenience boards and all deliberations through this board and any of its committees that resolve in such formal action were reported meetings, open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section one two one point two two of the ORC. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and shall be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved, as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, as all statutory requirements have been met.
Yes, sir. You'll see that I would pass the, I would pass the document for you. Nicole is just, is updating the resolution for me, and then I'm gonna get that to you trustees.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is a work injury.
Uh, I guess we need a vote.
Donald Workinney. Correct. It's a continuation of an injury. He was here for like four months.
Good.
Was injured off the ongoing knee problem.
Okay. And, and he's not on light duty or anything like that?
He's starting light duty again for that.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindsey?
Yes. All right, anything else for us?
The firefighters will be out trick or treating tonight. So they'll be out, but form if you're out trick or treating.
Are they dressed in firefighter?
Are they dressing, are they dressing like cops?
I wouldn't put anything past these guys.
You're a firefighter dressed like a cop.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you, um, your family's up, you can go ahead and take off whenever.
I'll fill that rest of the guys in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, moving on, Byron Smith, Chief Smith.
I'm trying to breathe, but with time on my hands, I keep making notes, so, sorry. I should have got him up here quicker. Um, first, I know some of you know him, some of you may not, former Chief, uh, Franklin Township Chief Castle is now in hospice. So I will update the orders as that progresses. So his, our prayers are with his family.
He's still local, correct?
Yeah, he lives in, uh, Lincoln, Delaware.
Is his mother still here with us?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Is she the, just over?
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to his wife, but we can have to go. So we'll do what he does do for them.
He was chief for how many years? He was with that for a long time.
He's thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was here the first eight years I was here, so.
He was here forever.
Yeah. And he's almost as old as the building.
All right. Um, hopefully you have better news.
Well, yeah, progressively. So the speed trailer on Gans Road, um, average speed is about fifty-three. Post speed limit is forty. Um, not terrible, except during school zones, so we are trying to put a focus on that as best we can. On any given day, you have over five thousand cars going one direction, walking through, which is a lot of cars. So that's, that's definitely something we're gonna focus on that.
I did have a phone call from a gentleman that wanted to thank you for, he saw the sign on, on Al Kyler, and he gave the report last time. And I shared that report with him, and he goes, I'm not surprised with the speed and everything, because they see it all the time.
Oh, it's terrible. Um, Richter Road, uh, we do have issues on Richter, which we've been focusing on the last couple of weeks, mainly because of the road closure, ongoing issues, of course, with dirt bikes, mini bikes, ATBs, that kind of thing. But on any given day of the week, you have about two hundred, two hundred and thirty cars going down there, which is probably a little high because Hart Road is still closed, so you've still got traffic, you know, trying to get diverted.
Have we heard of the, uh, letter to the people with the minibike, or any of that, any response?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So both letters have been sent out, one to eighty-nine Hart Road, one to eleven eighty Richter. Um, we spoke to a parent on Hart Road who said, hey, we didn't know that, we're not gonna do that again. The folks on Richter have not opened the door for us. Uh, but both letters have been sent out. I have not received the certified mail receipt back from the post office yet. Which is not common in our mail system here. Yeah, it's a little.
A little lacking.
Yes, there you go. Um, we had a couple other complaints up around fifty bowling. So, uh, trailer number fifteen, I spoke to the owner of the property in Florida. So she is going to have it boarded up, but she is also contracting with a company who is going to actually take the trailer, remove it, scrap the trailer. So Florida said sooner than later, because we even issued with homeless, you know, going in there, and we're afraid somebody else is either gonna be killed or set on fire or whatever. Um, so within the next couple of days, she is supposed to get that boarded up, so.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I wanna bring these other two gentlemen up to date. That is the trailer that we got our text on that had a deceased body in it two weekends ago.
Okay.
And so someone reached out to me and said it's not even boarded, it's, uh, you can access it and everything like that. So I got with Todd, Todd had the lady's number, and, uh, Todd and Byron got together, and I asked Byron to look into that. So I wanted to bring you two guys up to date, so you knew what we're, I wanted you to connect, make the connection.
So how was the body discovered? Someone else went in, or no?
Sorry, sir, I just need to let them know. I haven't had a chance to talk to them about it. Go ahead.
Um, so I did look at the trailer yesterday. So, yeah, it is, it is sort of open, not easily accessible for the amount of traffic that goes in there. And certainly dangerous. The deck outside is pretty dilapidated and stuff like that, so. We're gonna stay on that, make sure, at least get boarded up, and she is supposed to have it removed. She didn't give me a date of removal, but she has some kind of issues.
Does she own that?
She owns the whole park, and she's living somewhere in Florida.
Okay, gotcha.
And there's only maybe five trailers there.
There's not many left.
It's almost vacant, I think. So her plans, we'll show this, and she told me, uh, her plans would be to revitalize it as a park and gate it in and we get to gate it in, that we would for like seniors, like a, a senior trailer park. Told her we would do the very best we can and assist her with all the other issues, so I'll keep in contact with that. There was another issue in trailer number one with one vehicle, which was smashed, literally crushed. So I spoke to a resident that's a trailer. It should be gone already. If it isn't gone by tomorrow, we're gonna tow it because it's a safety hazard and it's close enough to the right line. She ensured me it would be gone. Her mother passed away, they didn't have a title. So in case you don't know, if you smash a car, it's no longer considered a car, you can scrap it without a title. And most scrap trucks. So like I said, if that's not gone by the end of today, then we're gonna redo it. Any questions on trailer park? Letters to Hart Richter, um, the Christmas tree, I already got with Jim, said the Christmas tree's already been paid for. Jim is just coordinating with what he can get into, coordinate when it's finished, to get it on the ground. Updates on the plaque. I got the quote, but we need to know, unless it's already been done, I don't know. What the inscription is gonna be. They need at least ten days to prepare the plaque.
What plaque?
The plaque of the dedication.
How about I take care of it, John, or James?
Yeah, I've been, I've been running with it, so I'll happily, uh, we'll be together on Monday. Can I present something to you on Monday?
Yeah.
That's, and then you can give your input, and, uh, I'll get to Byron by the end of the week, and we can get it ordered and ready to go, so.
Yeah.
No, no, and I'm glad you said that. I didn't, I'm gonna be honest about it, I didn't even think that we had to come up with it.
I, I didn't either. I mean, that's why we're kinda like all looking, yeah, it's just, so, I'm happy to run with it. Thanks, thanks to Brown's tires.
Well, yeah, something, yeah, whatever you want to say.
Absolutely.
Um, so that's taken care of. Traffic enforcement, we will have the main set of stats at next meeting for the month of October. There were a hundred thirty-two traffic stops made, forty-two citations issued, ten of those were in the corridor of Richter and Hart Road area. We're trying to focus on that as much as we could. I think it's all that.
I have a question, but it has to pertain to the speed areas, but I think it's gonna fall under Jim, so. The speed bumps. What can we do on these, like, Ray Avenue? It's a constant problem, all the time. And I, I know other places put up humps to slow them down. What, what, what do we need to do to, I'm asking both of you?
I was, Jim, Jim probably has more knowledge on this than I do, but I was told if it's a county roadway, they will not do that. If it's a township roadway, it's my understanding, they would have the authority. That, that, I mean, costs, of course, but.
Right.
Speed bumps or traffic calming or what have you.
Yeah. Cause I, I've been up and down Richter, and it's like, I can see how someone could.
Richter or Ray?
Both. I know Ray Avenue's just, I, I seen peril on.
Yeah.
It's, it's an ongoing issue over there also.
Yeah.
But there's other places in the township that we have issues with.
Speed?
Yeah. And I, it just, I was in another place, and all these, I'm like, ah, this is why.
You're, you're right, Chief. I mean, on the county road, they pretty much say no, that they definitely won't do it on the township side. It would be up to the board of trustees. Now, the county engineers has kind of veered us away from that in the past for whatever reasons.
The liability. Um, City of Columbus uses them, but they're self-insured, so we would need to check with our insurer if they would even insure, um, speed control devices. In the run, because we're liable, someone hits it at a hundred mile an hour.
Right.
And kills somebody.
That very well could be one reason why the county try to.
That's exactly why. They don't take, they don't take the liability.
The, uh, the house over in Broadline, that Officer Kidwell and Freddie went into and found all that trash and everything back in the summertime, and then they took all those horrible pictures and everything. I was told that that property had sold and that someone bought it from out of state, um, and it's in, it's not, it's not in good shape, I was wondering if you could get some eyes on that sometime and see if there was been.
Is that Volney? No, it's not.
Wasn't it Cool, was it Coolidge?
Coolidge is one that she lives on, so it's the, it's the next road, so. Uh, I, I'll get, I'll get you the exact address, uh, and then I'll get with you.
I can't remember the name of that road, save me now, I know you're talking about.
Um, there was also, and I'd already spoke to Jim about it, the alleys was grown back up and everything, and Jim said that they'd taken the boom mower down through there and everything, I, I just been, I've been here every day this week, uh, and I just haven't had, I got the complaint over the weekend. I haven't had time to get there yet, I will get there, I'll take Jim at his word, it's cut and everything, but, um, I, I just pass on what I'm given, but, um, you've taken care of a lot of their concerns with the trailer park and, uh, things like that, there was also rats and all, Nicole took care of that part of it, and I'm just trying to remember everything that.
Once I, once I know the address, I'll check out the house and then I'll find anything over there.
Yeah.
And we can start with some of that.
Well, remember, it ended up being hap, back to, or side-by-side homes.
Yeah.
Uh, one was owned, like, the father died and two sisters owned the home, and then there was another one next to it, and then a brand-new build. And that's like, wow, you know, you got, just built a brand-new home and you got that right on the side of you. Um, so, I will, uh, get over there, uh, this weekend and get back to you, uh, the first of the week with the address, if we can do that.
I will, I will contest, I've been through there and all the alleys look, other than trash, right there behind Speedway, which is an ongoing issue.
You think I'll sort of see?
Thank you.
No, that's all right.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
All right, thank you for the introduction. Hello, everybody. All right, I really didn't have anything on the agenda, I know we've always got to do any updates, and I'm gonna refer to Mr. Mazer on that one.
All right, we'll. Board members, what we've done is, uh, we had a committee, we had, uh, Mr. Blavins and Chief Smith and Chief Arnold, who were independent, had, they had no knowledge of any of the contractors that, that were quoting on Jim's new road department building. So, we were fortunate, we, we received two quotes, um, one quote was, was outstandingly high. The second quote we received is more in line with what our architectural specs and to be blunt, dollar amount, wants to construct a new building. So, what I would like to do from the board is get a motion for us to proceed with this contractor that the committee decided on, to bring the contractor in and go through some details about what, what we're expecting to construct this new, um, new road department building.
You said three bids, that was two?
Two bids.
Oh, two bids.
Two bids, yeah, two bids.
That's one more than when you and I talked. I, but I would make a motion that we would move forward with, uh, meetings with the con, with the contractor on, on the construction of the new building, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Are we going to, I'm sorry, this conversation, we're going to keep with the committee theme and just like?
Yeah, I, I think so.
We'll get together with the committee and then keep giving back reports to the board?
Absolutely, because I think the board.
Are you guys good with that or not good with that or what do you wanna do?
I think that's very, very smart.
Yeah, I don't mind doing it, I know you gentlemen, I, I'm happy to do it.
Um, speaking of the building, well, we got a motion on the floor. Can you give us a roll call?
Oh, Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
And Mr. Mazer?
Yes. We had talked, have you got a full set of plans?
No, I think we have the new ones printed off, yeah, we're gonna get a couple sets of that done when we, when we do get it done. But in, in lines with what, uh, Mr. Mazer's talking about, we're also in a process now, I know I've made contact with four different door companies, trying to get quotes on the overhead doors, um, the interior work, the oil separators, we're still, there's a lot of things still in the works, I'm doing all this, and then we'll be able to bring all that into committee, committee can look off it over, and maybe consider.
And that's critical to, to encumber that, those ARPA funds. When we get quotes, then we can cover the funds, and we have until December thirty-one to utilize all the ARPA funds. We're gonna back forty million.
We'll use it. Um, and with that being said, there's one thing I know I mentioned in the last meeting when we were talking about, um, how the department did all the gravel work and everything, and the one quote that Mr. Mazer got, probably was like seventy-six thousand dollars to have them, they're gonna do it. I had said that we did it for fifteen thousand, I was a little off, very, we actually did it for right around thirty-four hundred for the gravel.
Well, that's a big swing.
Yeah, I kinda missed it, I was looking at a different number when I wrote that number down, so, big difference. Um, as you all may have seen, we took the island out and we put the asphalt in. We are in a process now bordering the parking blocks, and it looks like with the work that was done with the gravel and taking the island out, we're going to be able to establish probably right around twenty-six, twenty-seven parking places. So, we should be okay. So, I'm just letting you all know, I mean, we're in the process now, let's speak with Mr. Mazer, we have, um, people lined up where we get different, uh, parking blocks, and then once we get those, get those put in place.
Are they the good ones, the concrete ones?
Looking at a couple of different ones, the concrete ones are sewn, they've got some good, uh.
Rubber ones?
Remanufactured rubber ones, they're very sturdy, I've, I've actually seen those.
Pretty sturdy. Don't have to paint them, they don't chip.
They don't go on, they're.
Right, yeah. Long, chubby.
Something that came to mind on the building, and I, we're not here to redo the building, but this just came to mind, I wanted to ask you. Um, you said you didn't want a door in the back, and I wanted, we had a instant where we needed a dock.
Would there be any need to, you could either do a pit or you could have one where a truck could back up and you guys would be able to unload things, it, would that be something that would interest you or not interest you?
Um, it's interesting to think about that, the problem that we're gonna run into, to be quite honest with you, Mike, is the location of where the building has to go and the space that we have to work with, we won't have the room behind the building.
Oh, I thought Steve said there.
That we, we won't have room behind, because a building's pretty much gonna sit right on the property line.
Oh, all right, 'cause I thought it fit, what's the setback, ten, ten, not, not how it matters?
It's ten foot, but I think we, we need to allow us to.
That's all I need, I just was thinking about it.
I know that somebody also brought up the door on, like, the red door on that side of the building.
That was me.
We would not be able to even extend the building that way because of where the existing building here, we're already only gonna have twenty-some feet in between them, so we really couldn't put anything on that end either, so.
All right, that's all I got, sir. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
I think that's it. Thank you.
And, and you have started leaf pickup already?
Yes, we have, and it's, it's actually, we will probably be bombarded after this weekend with the rain.
I'm looking, I'm still looking out and seeing the trees blow, and I, I know my yard and wind, got covered, maybe it'd blow them all into City of Columbus.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, moving on, Mr. Mazer.
Um, I have, um, for fiscal, I have some motions to pay the building's payroll. First is motion to approve accounts payable for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four through October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-seven cents from ACH vouchers nineteen forty-two, that's twenty twenty-four through twenty seventy-nine, that's twenty twenty-four. And I have exhibits attached for the board's review.
Um, so moved as the resolution, or the motion is written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Um, ask for discussion. Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Mazer?
Yes.
I did.
John, yeah.
Then the next I have is a motion to approve payable written as presented on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve payable for the pay period beginning August sixth, twenty twenty-four through August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four in the gross amount of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. ACH direct deposits are made on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. The, uh, electronic voucher, vouchers nineteen ninety-three, twenty twenty-four through twenty forty-nine, twenty twenty-four, and exhibit is attached for the trustees' review.
So moved as the motion is written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And that's all I have for this one.
Moving on into your administrative role.
Okay, thank you, I have a, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seven eight and its obligations approved by the township administrator between October fifteenth and October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas Board of Trustees in resolution twenty twenty-one dash one thirty authorize the township administrator to approve and incur obligations of ten thousand or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven, five oh seven point one-one of the ORC. Whereas pursuant provisions in section five oh seven point one-one A of this, of the ORC, the obligations approved and incurred by the administrator must be subsequently approved by the adoption of the formal resolution of the Board of Trustees. The obligations authorized incurred by the administrator presented in exhibit A attached and are hereby approved. All formal actions of the board concerning, related to adoption of this resolution and the deliberations of this board and its committees resolving such formal action were in open meetings in public in compliance with section one two one point two-two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
I, I'll make a motion that we accept. The resolution is written, but I do have a question after the second.
I'll second.
My question is, is, i- it's real simple, do we, we have to pay for the tires that? Do we have to pay somebody to take the tires that we collect?
Oh, yeah. Is that Liberty? Yeah, Liberty Tower down there.
What we're essentially trying to do is make an outlet, usually a couple times a year for residents versus it ended up in other people's homes and alleys.
I just, I, I find it just, you know, in that, any other discussion?
I, I have some discussions, so on this, the, uh, last month, uh, was that we put in a new HVAC system, and I'm reporting that it's working very well, maybe too well, I'm not sure what we put that, um, thermostat on, but I'm free, so, I feel good.
Seventy-two.
It's only on seventy-two, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we voted on this last, we had a motion, you had a question.
Yep.
I had a second, did we vote on?
We have not voted yet, we, we had a discussion, so, any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, we have a roll call on this.
Uh, Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Didn't want us to skip that.
Oh, I, I had it, he went on into his discussion, so.
Ready for the next resolution?
Yeah.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seven nine, it's a re- resolution approving the transfer of funds between accounts. Uh, being resolved at the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the transfer of the remaining funds for twenty twenty-four and retroactive as of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four from account one thousand dash one one zero dash one two two dash one one two zero, which is on the fiscal office, to account one thousand, one one zero, one three one, dash one one two zero, to the administrative, um, uh, account. Per resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three one attached, uh, as an exhibit. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning, related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of this board and its committees have resolved in such formal action were in meeting open to the public and in compliance with section one two one point two-two of the ORC. Uh, this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written?
I'll be happy to answer.
Um, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Next resolution is twenty twenty-four dash one eight, it's a resolution approving the purchase of ransomware for township computers. Uh, be it resolved at the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the purchase of open DNS umbrella ransomware through the township's IT consultant, Revolution Group, in the amount not exceed twenty-one hundred dollars. Installation is fourteen hundred and licenses are a total of seven hundred dollars. Exhibit attached, be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and the deliberations of the board and its committees were in formal action, open to the public, and they were in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two-two of the ORC. And this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-one, it's a resolution approving the purchase of a new emergency siren using, uh, utilizing ARPA funds. And be it resolved at the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the purchase of a new omnidirectional emergency siren, replacing an existing aging tornado siren and pole installation, using, utilizing ARPA funds in the amount not exceed fifty thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning, related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and all deliberations of the, of the board and its committees resolve in such formal action were in meeting open to the public and in compliance with section one two one point two-two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption. And you will see the quote, um, from that being attached to that.
Is that for the sirens and the fifty thousand for everything?
Yep.
Okay, 'cause that was a lot better than what we were first looking at.
We're reusing the pole, the, the contractor's able to pull the old one out, for now, for now, we'll see. But they told us that you pull the old pole out, move it, attach a new siren to it and.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
Yeah, you know that. I'll second.
Um, any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
I knew it was only a matter of time before we had to replace that siren.
The other one, the other one, Brown Road, a couple years will have to be replaced.
Yeah.
Um, I have resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-two. Uh, it's a resolution, amending resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight four, which is attached. Authorizing payment of obligations incurred by the township via direct deposit of funds. Um, whereas to pay obligations to the township on a timely basis and to meet the requirements of vendors and government agencies. It's necessary to provide for payments by means other than checks or paper warrants. it is necessary to provide for payments by means other than checks or paper warrants. And whereas section five oh seven point one one of the ORC allows a board of township trustees to authorize a payment of lawful obligations by direct deposit of funds by ETF in accordance with section nine point three seven E of the Ohio Revised Code effective August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, retroactively approves authorized staff to pay township obligations by direct deposit of funds by elects, electronic transfer commonly referred to as ACH. The authorized staff members shall identify procedures for the payment of obligations by direct deposit. The authorized staff members shall report to the Board of Trustees on a regular, reoccurring basis that those obligations paid by direct deposit and the Board of Trustees shall accept the report by motion. Be it further resolved that all formal actions in this board concerning related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that result in such formal action were, were meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including section one two one point two two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
And Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
The last thing I have trustees, as I spoke with Jeff um, earlier this week he would like some of your time the week of um, November twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, I, I believe we have reading on the fourteenth, yes.
Yes.
Um, oh, I'm sorry, he, he said either the twelfth or thirteenth.
If we're over here, can you see if he can do the fourteenth?
I will, I will. He would like to um, go over the twenty twenty five budget, or just the twenty twenty, twenty five budget.
Yeah, just like today, if we could come in at like nine o'clock.
If, if not, I, of course, I will let.
And also can we look at um, a brace someone, shimmer account?
Yes, oh, yes, sir, yeah, yes.
And that way we can see how that looks.
That should not be a problem. Okay.
Any, anything else for us?
No, sir.
Alright. Uh, moving on to us, I, I do have something. Um, we are approaching the end of the year and um, we only have one meeting in November with um, with the holiday. Um, looking at December, we have two scheduled, but I would like to make a motion that we cancel the twenty sixth, the day after Christmas and um, come in the week before if we need to for a special meeting.
I would second that.
Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mr. Mazer, would you please give us a roll call on the motion?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
So they note that on the Facebook page that canceled.
Yeah, uh, Nicole?
Yeah, I heard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, also. Uh, uh, any other thing I have, I won't, I will um, I will be out, like I said, with fire, I'll be out. For candidates and also for the fire levy on Saturday, so I will not see you gentlemen at the trunk or treat unless I get done early.
And then, that's on Sunday, correct?
Saturday, one to four. Saturday, one to four.
One to four.
Yep. Um, I'm sure Mike wants to talk on, on, on that also, so I will yield the floor to John if he has anything.
I'll yield it over to Mike, I don't have anything.
Okay, the only thing I have is um, I will not be at trunk or treat Byron, you already knew that, so John, you are going down there?
Yeah, so far my schedule's good for that.
Okay, I will try to make it there, but um, I wanted to remind everybody that starting, this Saturday starts our kickoff with the free photos with Santa, so we'll be out here in this parking lot from nine to eleven. Come and join us, Santa will be here, free pictures. We've got some coloring books and crayons for the young ones and some candy canes. Don't forget, if you'd like to bring some shelf staple food products, we're gonna donate them to Helping Hands. And I guess the last thing I want to say is, don't forget to vote on Tuesday.
And what was those dates again, you said from nine AM to eleven?
I, for this Saturday.
Okay.
I, do you want all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so to be, the uh, I'm trying to look.
We're on the website.
Okay, it's the next one.
No, we skip.
Oh, we do skip.
Yeah, we skip.
The next one's the sixteen.
You have it Byron, is it the sixteenth?
Yeah, the next one's the sixteen.
The thirtieth?
The third and then the seventh.
And the seventh. And then the fourteenth will be.
Is our Christmas tree lighting.
Yep.
And our um, parade. I was just doing them one at a time, gentlemen.
No worries, I appreciate it.
But other than that, that's all I have.
I just wanna try to get it in my count, that's a busy time for me.
No, no, everyone's welcome.
Do you guys have a flyer, cause I can post it in two of my Facebook groups.
You know what, I don't really have a flyer, um, but there's a photo right there that you could take with your camera before you leave. And uh, you, could you use it like that, cause I just don't have.
I just need the dates and.
Nicole can get you a flyer.
I'll get it to you, okay?
Alright.
There's a, there's a post with all that, that even on Facebook.
Mike, can people bring pets to head pictures?
Yeah, that's what I said the other day. Um, I said, bring your uh, your family, your kids, um, your pets, whatever you got.
Okay.
So if you want, Santa will be here and you'll be more than happy to take a picture.
Alright, the only thing else I have is, just wanna tag off what Mike said about getting out and voting. If you haven't voted yet, please, please, please go vote. Um, early voting center is open all weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Um, if you can get up there and vote, go do it. Um, it's a huge turnout, but they've changed it, there's not a big wait anymore. Probably twenty minutes, thirty minutes, you do that at your polling place. But if you don't go out this weekend, please go Sa- uh, Sa- um, Tuesday. Um, polls will be open early and they'll be open until seven thirty. Township really needs you to vote for the fire levy and also unrule um, along with many, many, many other elections that this year holds our country in the balance, so. With that being said, happy Halloween, meetings adjourned.